I would like to call to order the City of Lake Forest School District Number 67 Board of Education Meeting for Tuesday, November 27, 2012. We did hold an executive session prior to this meeting. May I have -- but no action was taken. May I have a roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Anderson. Mrs. Fisher.
Present.
Mr. Julian.
Here.
Mr. Pendersky.
Here.
Mrs. Rose.
Present.
Mr. Schuler.
Here.
Mrs. Wald.
Here. Thank you very much. Beginning with the President's Report. Recently, the Chicago Tribune ran an article regarding financial decisions made by both the District 67 and Lake Forest High School Boards of Education. This article contained numerous allegations and misrepresentations. The story commingled over eighteen years of information from multiple school boards, a local bank, the caucus, local citizens, et cetera, into one sensationalized report. An interesting read, but the article was missing a preponderance of the facts. Here are just a couple of examples. The Board of Education's loan to a school official has not been fully paid. The Tribune failed to report the interest rate on the loan was comparable to or better than the investment rates the district could have obtained externally. Interestingly, the key fact was admitted that the loan yielded a financial benefit to the school districts. The Board structured the loan to be paid over five years. The repayments are current and in the fourth year of the five-year repayment schedule. The questioning of Lake Forest Bank and Trusts supplying banking services for both school districts. The Tribune failed to disclose that Lake Forest Bank and Trust submitted the most cost-effective offer of nine proposals submitted to the district. In 2010, the school districts researched methods to streamline banking services across both bodies to provide support in a more cost-effective and efficient manner. Nine proposals were submitted to a district committee, and Lake Forest Bank and Trust, a well-respected local bank with a proven track record, offered the most comprehensive and competitive solutions. The recommendation was discussed at joint finance committees and committee meetings and adopted at a public meeting by the Boards of Education. Dr. Griffith recused himself from any discussions or actions regarding this proposal. The two districts also work with many other financial institutions for investments and banking services, all of which are reviewed and audited by independent bodies. These are just a couple examples of the article's numerous misrepresentations and undocumented insinuations of wrongdoing. Both districts' finance committees, consisting of Board and community representatives, consistently review all aspects of the district finances. Thank you. And that brings us to the Superintendent's Report. Mr. Simic?
Thank you, Mrs. Wald. Thank you, Mrs. Wald, and I'd like to ask Mr. Ben Gray and some of his students to come forward. We have three middle school students that deserve recognition today for outstanding achievement resulting in part from our great middle school choir program, which Mr. Gray is a very significant part. Mr. Gray is the Deer Path Choral Director and will introduce our school students and describe their various achievements.
Thank you so much, Mr. Simic, and good evening, Board of Education members and everyone here this evening. I'm the Director of Choirs at Deer Path Middle School, and I have so many fabulous students, over 200 students, fifth through eighth grade, and really, really fortunate to work with such a great group of students. Earlier this fall, I invited all students in my program who were interested to apply for the American Choral Directors Association National Choir. The process for that was to apply via a audition tape. So these students worked with me after school for upwards of one to two hours to prepare an audition where they would sing two unaccompanied scales, plus my country, "Tis of Thee," and in the case of one of our students, a solo as well. And those were uploaded to a website, and then they were reviewed by a panel of judges. Over 3,600 students nationwide applied to be part of these choirs. And these three students are the first students in the history of our district that were accepted to this choir. So they will get to travel to Dallas, Texas in mid-March, and I will be there as well to watch their performance, where they will get to work with some of the leading conductors in the field of choral music education. So it's really an exceptional honor, and we're so proud of them. So I would like to recognize at this time these three students: eighth-grade student sixth-grade student Adam Clayton,[383.78][383.78][applause] and eighth-grade student Matthew LaMay.[392.63][392.63][applause] It is my hope that during these March performances, we can get a videotape of the performance and perhaps try and present that to you at the April Board Meeting as well. So thank you so much for inviting me here this evening, Mr. Simic and Dr. Hendrickson, and thank you all of you for coming as well.
And students and parents, you are certainly welcome to stay for the balance of the meeting. However, we've seen a number of times that students have a great deal of activity that they do outside and find their way to the door, as they are doing right now.[435.81][435.81][laughter] So thank you very, very much for coming, and congratulations again. The second part of the Superintendent's Report tonight is a brief presentation on the China trip. There are four district employees that recently were part of a 420-person American delegation to China in various parts, or ten different provinces in China, that were visited by American educators, almost entirely at the expense of Hanban, which is the part of the Chinese government in charge of advocating Chinese language and also the teaching of Mandarin. And so we were invited to participate in that because we, over in the corner over here underneath the clock, you can see that we have a Confucius classroom. We are one of a very small number of school districts nationally and internationally that have that distinction. There's only 100. I'm getting some feedback here from more informed members of our administration that there are only 100 Confucius classrooms in the nation, of which we are one. And so with that, Mr. Moline and Dr. Shen.
Sure. We'd like to start off -- thank you, first of all. I'd like to start off with sort of a picture show of some of the images that we observed
Good evening. I had the pleasure of accompanying Mr. Simic, Mr. Moline, and then Carolyn Crumice joined us as well. We learned that Carolyn is an amazing photographer, so the images that you see in this presentation were taken by Carolyn. And she did a nice job of capturing, I think, the contrast of what we saw when we accompanied on this trip. We had opportunities to visit and interact culturally, as well as visit schools, have opportunities to discuss education with Chinese educators, and just a lot of different opportunities. And we tried to summarize our thoughts into three strands: what did we see, what did we learn, and what does it mean for our kids here in Lake Forest. So I'm going to talk about what we saw. We learned that kids in China are just like the kids here in Lake Forest. They are hardworking, they enjoy being in school, they have a lot of support for their education from their families and extended families, and are investing in the future for the kids. We learned that a good share, if not all, of the work that gets done in China between people is about relationships. People getting to know you, people understanding who you are, and having a discussion about what's important for us and moving forward. So the importance of relationships was critical, I think, in conversations we had throughout the country. Some of the contrasts you might have seen in our slides, as I don't know if any of you picked up, the man that was sitting amongst a bunch of rusted equipment, he's on his cellphone, and behind him is a massive building structure of high-rises. So the contrast between what we now see in the first world in China and what is still alive and well there in the third world, where people's primary mode of transportation is a bicycle. And so it was quite a contrast for us, and kind of the absence of the middle class, kind of what's in the middle. There are haves and have-nots, and it's pretty extreme in some cases. The role of the government, obviously, is very different from what we experience here in the United States and having an opportunity to talk with folks and hear a little bit more about education. It's the difference between having a controlled environment and a capitalistic environment that we live under here. And the irony is that China is trying to move toward decentralization of their curriculum and bring more things to their country with respect to social-emotional needs with kids and some of the things that their curriculum hasn't focused on. And we noticed that in our country, we're moving towards centralization with the national standards, with the Common Core, and some of those things. So it was interesting to see the juxtaposition there. And then the way they've preserved history throughout their country and the rich history in all of the cities, much older than our country, of course, and the modernity around. You lose track of the scale or the cranes and the number of sky rises because they're everywhere, right next to amazing buildings and palaces and the Great Wall. So those are just some of the things we saw. I'm going to turn it over to Joe to talk about what we learned while we were there.
Thank you. I'm Joe Moline, Director of Personnel Services. Okay, in terms of what did we learn, the first, maybe the understatement of the year, China is important. We could see that very, very clearly, very vividly. China is a very important country, and it's -- and to jump off of that, it's an emerging and developing one, and you can actually see the development with your eyes. You can see buildings going up everywhere, cranes everywhere. It was just very interesting to see a culture that's kind of going through that rapid development. Moreover, China sees our importance, and I think we were treated like very important people that entire trip, and it really felt good. I think that they wanted to learn, how do we educate students? How do we bring about some of the innovative thinking, the critical thinking, some of the real strengths of our education system, really trying to glean that information from us? And really had some great conversations because of that. Definitely, I think, they see American education system as a leader in many respects. You know, we learned a lot of anecdotes that made us realize, again, how much they see our importance, one of those being, we learned that there are four times more Americans now studying in China than just four years ago. So just really rapid growth. In a lot of different ways, their initiatives are focused towards international education and really ramping up their system. So beyond that, they definitely, you can tell, are viewing education as central to their success, to their economic success, to their individual and their collective success, really investing heavily in education and really trying to, again, promote more critical thinking, more kind of some of the experiential learning that I think we're really strong at in the U.S., particularly, I'd say, in Lake Forest schools where it's really been an emphasis. But they're not there yet. We also noticed in the classrooms that that's sort of the reforms that they're aiming towards, but I think it's easier said than done. We still noticed a lot of, you know, traditional approaches where students are kind of in desks and rows, and it's more teacher-directed learning and less student-centered than what we're accustomed to and what we expect here. But I know that they're trying to move in that direction, and it will happen over time. The next, I'm just going to go into a slide of the Qingjin Planning Museum, where we had an opportunity to see some very ambitious plans of Qingjin, which is a large port city where we spent most of our time. And it's going to go right into a video of kind of what are the city's plans.[1015.73][1015.73][music] Okay, so the sound was a little bit difficult there, but we all left that experience, again, just very, with a really strong impression that Qingjin and China are on the move, you know, very growing and ambitious plans. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Superintendent Simic to talk about what does this mean for our students.
Moline, can you go back and start that video one more time?
Yes.
To give a little bit of background on this, this is in a room that is about three times the size of this room.
And this is pretty awkward, isn't it?[1104.08][1104.08][laughter] So this is in a room about three times as large as this room, and the entire thing is like the largest train-set table you've ever seen in your entire life. What's important about it is that the model that they have here is only part of what currently exists. So what they're showing is a vision of Qingjin's future. Qingjin is the largest container port in China. You think of all the goods that we get, everything that comes in a container, most of those products come out of this port. And so what they're doing here is they're showing, this is what is next. So the plan is five universities, four high-speed rail systems that have bullet trains going 250 kilometers per hour, and elsewhere in China, this plan exists for other cities. So this entire building, this room that we were in that houses this, that's just one room of an entire building dedicated to the vision of Qingjin's future. The Chinese are investing a quarter trillion dollars in airport construction alone, just building airports. That's the same as the United States is spending on two years of our war in Afghanistan, to put that in context. And all of that money is going into their infrastructure. So with that, with the next slide. So what does this mean for our kids? Global citizenry and competence are a very big deal. So they have four times as many American kids studying in Chinese universities than just four years ago. Four times as many. They have the largest growing middle class in the world. They already have more English speakers than we have United States residents. And these people have ambitions of a middle-class lifestyle, and someone will be providing the goods and services for that lifestyle. And so what this means for our students is an opportunity to be a part of an extraordinarily rapidly developing part of the world. And finally, I think we have one more slide after this. We can prepare our students to be a part of this, or, and by doing so, they'll wind up having a thumb on the scale for themselves, and we'll have our thumb on the scale for them. If they, if we do not prepare them for this global world that they're going to be living in, there is no question that they will miss opportunities because there's so, there's a staggering number of opportunities that exist in the East right now. It won't just be China, it'll be India and other densely populated areas of Asia. But for right now, China is actually paying to bring our people over, and as Mr. Moline said, it was the best professional development he had ever done. It was round the clock, I mean, we never stopped, and it was learning and talking and meeting people and all sorts of different activities. And so we certainly hope to get more and more of our students to head to China, more and more of our staff as well, especially if we can get somebody else to foot the bill for that.[1310.26][1310.26][applause]
There's one more.
Oh, okay. Oh, I think that might be it, actually.
So with that, I'd like to say, this is a picture, this is, we believe is Mrs. Crumice's best picture. This is somebody we called Ray Charles.[1328.99][1328.99][laughter] And a great shot of him and another shot of his wife. I'd like to say thank you to Dr. Shen, Mrs. Crumice, and Mr. Moline for giving up several nights of sleep because, well, Mr. Moline slept on the plane, but the rest of us didn't, I believe, and away from family and friends as well, and a great learning experience.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the third part of Superintendent's Report, very briefly, is tomorrow. I sent out an email to parents today. Tomorrow, we'll go the posting of an elementary position for an elementary principal. We're moving back into the one-building, one-principal structure for our elementary buildings. We're going to leave our options open, so we have not designated which building the new principal will be in. Again, the posting will go out tomorrow. We will be conducting a national search, and we believe that this is the most important thing that we do. Our principals hire our teachers, and they develop our teachers. They are the instructional leaders of our building. There's nothing that we can do that is more important than finding great leaders for our school buildings. So we'll be activating our private and professional networks to create as large a talent pool as we can, and we want the deepest and largest talent pool. We believe that Lake Forest is in a commanding position to attract talent from across the country and even around the world, and so we look forward to having a new leader in place for one of our buildings sometime beginning probably July 1st, but we'll have that determination made sometime in the early spring. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Simic. This brings us to public participation. Is there a member of our audience that would like to address the Board? Seeing none, we'll move on to our reports and discussion. The first is the 21st Century Learning and Technology. Mr. Simic?
Thank you, and I'd like to invite Dr. Hendrickson and Mrs. Epti to address what fits in pretty nicely with the Superintendent's Report just moments ago.
We began working on the 2020 Vision three years ago, and this was a tri-district effort, Lake Bluff, Lake Forest High School, and District 67 put together the vision of where we want our students to be in 2020 as far as their learning and knowledge and skills. So this is an update on where we are in this initiative, and I would say, as I shared in the report, and I'm going to make some copies here available to the public, this has worked out very nicely. We began this three years ago, and in those three years, two more major initiatives have come along to basically bolster our position for engaging students in learning. And those two are the Common Core State Standards, which up the rigor and the engagement for students. They put the emphasis on thinking skills. And the second, then, is our new teacher evaluation plan, which the state of Illinois has caused us to adopt this year. We chose the Danielson Framework, as we've discussed here before, and again, there's a great emphasis on student engagement and higher-level thinking skills. So these three initiatives that we have been involved in these three years are just kind of all interconnected. So this is, this is our report, and we've got some real special guests to share with you, but the first which is Bridget Booker is going to come and share. You are, oh, I'm sorry. My great friend, Judy Epti. Judy, as you know, joined us this year. She's our Instructional Technology Director, and she's brought all kinds of great ideas and leadership to our initiatives. Judy?
It's always a good one, a tech person can't work the technology right. I couldn't read them.
I know.
Vanity prevented me from finding the correct button, so. Anyway, thank you very much for this opportunity to spotlight a few of the exciting things happening across the district. As we know, today's student is different than we were. They're connected learners, they thrive on working with others and solving problems. They learn by doing, and as we noticed in the previous presentation, they're global citizens. They have near constant access to information at the tips of their fingers. It's quite an awesome task to keep them motivated, engaged, and prepare them for a future we can't even imagine. Luckily, we are well-equipped for these challenges. Initiatives like Dr. Hendrickson mentioned, like the Common Core Standards and our 2020 Vision, help to focus and guide our work. The saying "It takes a village" is truly appropriate when it comes to making technology a seamless part of teaching and learning in District 67. It's my true honor to work with an amazing team of teachers and support staff across the district. Our district tech coaches and a 21st Century Integration Specialist are here tonight. They contributed greatly to our presentation and our integral partners with our teachers and students on a daily basis, and I just want to take a quick moment to introduce them to you. We have Laura Montgomery, and in the back, we have Amy Lambert, and Bridget Booker, who we'll hear from a little bit later. And missing tonight is Colleen Hardy, who is our 21st Century Learning Integration Specialist for the seven, eight side that we brought on this year, and she's been a wonderful addition to the team. I'm also indebted to Cornelius DeBose and Andy Hendrickson for their support and assistance. In every building, there's much success to share with regard to students and teachers' use of technology as an integrated tool for teaching and learning. In our short presentation tonight, we'll highlight two of our most impactful initiatives and speak a little bit about what to expect for the rest of the school year. We're extremely fortunate to have a cart of 30 iPads at each elementary school and additional iPads in specialized use with small groups of students across the district. We are very grateful for our generous parent community. I can truthfully say nearly every iPad that's in the hands of our students and our teachers was purchased via an LDA or Spirit Grant, so we are truly, truly grateful for that. This year has seen iPads begin the transition from tools for practicing skills to iPads being used as creativity and creation devices. This is especially true for our third and fourth graders. Bringing iPads into the elementary buildings started as an idea for a grant written by Bridget a few years ago and has blossomed today into the use of iPads as essential tools for learning in the K-2 classrooms. Here to share a project created using iPads is Bridget Booker.
Thank you and good evening. I would like to take just a brief moment to share the new ways that elementary students have used iPads in the classroom this year. And I do want to preface that what we are sharing this evening through this-- And I do want to preface that what we are sharing this evening through this video was not a coached or rehearsed presentation, but the beauty was it, was that it was themselves, the students, that identified the 21st century learning skills that you will hear about from second grade. That was just a little cute example and the kids were so excited to share. They could not wait till we came to the classroom in order to see it and just were so proud of themselves. And it was a short, cute little thing that's available on the iPad. So thank you.
It's always a tough act to follow children, so I'm going to shortly bring up some more children to, to speak for, for us. Our elementary students also use laptops for learning and creating projects and receive instruction in the computer lab and an opportunity to practice what they've learned. Web 2.0 tools like Edmodo, I'm sorry, Animoto, Glogster, and Weebly are popular ways for students to demonstrate and share their learning. These are common scenes around Deerpath Middle School. Students can be seen using their netbooks in the hallways, in the libraries, and in the classrooms. While the netbook is one of many tools used for learning, having anytime access to an Internet-connected device has proven to be valuable for our students. Here tonight, to speak on behalf of Deerpath students, we have Grace Geshidl from fifth grade and Jack Armstrong, an eighth grader. They'll be sharing their thoughts on the one-to-one initiative.
Good evening, and my name is Jack Armstrong. I'm an eighth grader at Deerpath Middle School and I'm here to share with you my feelings and thoughts about the netbooks. To start off on a positive note, I think that the netbooks and the laptops that we have available at school provides an easy and safe way to access things such as Edmodo, which gives us an outlook of the weekly schedule and activities and our assignments for the week. And it also makes it easier for teachers to really involve themselves more with us as the students, whether it's taking a quiz on the netbooks or on Edmodo, or it's accessing the CNN Student News that we do a lot in Social Studies. And we also do videos as well as like informational research on the netbooks, which really, if we didn't have a source of technology or computer, that would not be available to us, which is a crucial portion of our learning and our curriculum, that if we didn't have that, we wouldn't be, the education process would not be as fulfilling as it is with the netbooks. Secondly, I think that the netbooks create a safe and productive way to do research and also involve the links that the teachers give us, which also can tap into different things like, such as websites that can, like I remember in social studies, we did a project where we used different websites and it was different links that our teacher gave us. And we, it was kind of like a little maze that we went through many websites and it was, and it all linked into the curriculum that we were talking about. And it was, I think it was an awesome experience that really helped me learn more of the hands-on experience, and I think that's another positive with the netbooks. Going into the negative aspect of the netbooks, many people complain in seventh and eighth grade, but out of all those complaints, I think that many people say that the netbooks are unreliable, they're inconsistent, which I also agree with and I do think it's a major problem. And we are trying to integrate these unreliable netbooks into math and science, which, in my opinion, is a problem because when you're talking about something like math or science, there's a learning curve for math and science. And when you're involving something with a initial learning curve and you're bringing something that we, the students need to learn a new thing, such as a netbook, you're involving a more complex system that these students need to learn. It's making their lives much more complicated than they actually need to be. And going back to the unreliable portion, kids, they are, the netbooks are great, but when a kid has a broken screen or they, they have a really slow connection, it disable, it kind of puts up a roadblock where they can't do the curriculum or they can't participate in the different things that the class requires them to. And I think if we involve a more reliable and Internet-friendly device, I think that this whole technology aspect will be greatly beneficial to these students in seventh and eighth grade as well as fifth and sixth grade. And I think if we find a reliable, Internet-friendly, and well-manufactured item, I think this would be fantastic for all these kids and it'll provide a more hands-on experience rather than having the teacher teach all the time. And I think the netbooks are fantastic, but if we could find a more, if we could find a more reliable and Internet-friendly thing, I think this would be great for our district. Thank you.
That's great input, Jack. Thanks.
I'm Grace Geshidl. I'm a fifth, I'm a fifth grader at Deerpath Middle School. The netbooks this year have been great, from Agile Mind to Edmodo. Each, each kid gets to learn twice as much with the netbooks, and one way we learn is on our netbooks. We have new and advanced websites like KidBlog and PowerSchool, although that has been around for a while. With our netbooks, we can access more. I believe our most useful site is Edmodo. This is where my teachers post homework, assignments, and comment. We can ask questions from home, which can be extremely useful. The netbooks are great for learning new things and we can accomplish so much more with them. It is easier for us to access more information and use the technology we are comfortable with. One drawback to the netbooks is that netbooks can be slow, but it is well worth it to have our own computer at school. Trust me, the kids know a lot about technology and using it every day makes learning fun.
Thank you very much, Grace.
We're always interested in the students' experiences with the one-to-one initiative. The coaches are in the classroom and talk with students in the hallways and the cafeteria to gauge how things are going. Recently, random samplings of students were polled to gather some additional data. From this survey, we learned that students are using their netbooks most frequently in Language Arts and Social Studies. We also learned that the most popular activities for netbook use were writing with Google Docs, checking Edmodo for homework, and watching instructional videos or news clips. Playing educational games and having online discussions via Edmodo round out the top five activities. Through the survey, students report that they enjoy having their own device. It's a way to stay organized, whether they use the Edmodo calendar, digital sticky notes, or their own method. Further, teachers have mentioned benefits, like an increase in collaboration and cooperation, cooperative behaviors, like posting and answering questions among classmates within Edmodo at home at night. One teacher recently shared she was seeing a different side of her students. Some who may not verbally participate in class on a frequent basis were showing an increase in participation during online discussions. We have found that students having access to a variety of Web 2.0 tools gives students a greater chance of expressing themselves creatively. Anytime access to an Internet-enabled device has equipped students to create projects not previously possible. I thought this image was quite fitting as there's still much ahead of us as we work with our 21st century learning. Yet, as we look through the rearview mirror, we realize we have come a long way. As we look forward, we see our teachers are excited to innovate and utilize tools like smartboards and iPads in new ways and to find fresh ways to engage our, gauge our students by flipping their classrooms or sending students on a QR scavenger, QR code scavenger hunt. We're evaluating devices that will meet, best meet the needs of our students for the future of our one-to-one initiative and will begin piloting this winter. With an eye on where we've been, our feet in the present, and a gaze out onto the horizon, we're confident that through teamwork, through the support of the Board of Education and partnering with our parent community, District 67 students will be competent leaders of the 21st century, and we're looking forward to the ride. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other, any questions, board members?
I just wanted to compliment our, our student guests for an excellent job and some insightful comments. Thank you.
Okay. That brings us to the K-5 Math Curriculum Update. Dr. Simic, Mr. Simic?
Dr. wannabe Simic. The K-5 Math Curriculum Update, you'll find at your table, it is a written update this month.
Okay, so that is a written update, board members. It will bring us to our Board Committee Reports, beginning with the Board of Education Committee, including Leslie Fisher, Bill Anderson, and Rick Schuler.
Good evening. And what I'm going to say is going to pale in comparison to what we have heard here tonight and much of our education committee's meeting that occurred on Tuesday, November 13th, was a preview of the presentations here this evening. So I'm glad to say our administrators and our students depicted things better than I ever could. As we previewed the Board, the Board Presentation on 21st Century Learning that was just presented to us, we were delighted to have Judy Epke join our meeting. She is very insightful and has been a wonderful addition to the district, so welcome. Welcome to you. We also had a preview of a Board Presentation that will be on, at the December 11th Board Meeting on Assessment. A lot of interesting things going on there that Dr. Henrickson and Dr. Cooley informed us of, and they will present just in now, two weeks from now. So we'll wait on that. In addition, we did talk about the Goal Setting Workshop for 2013 and 2014. We are currently, our District 67 teachers and principals are evaluating and, in many cases, rewriting our key goals. So our vision statements are staying the same, but while taking a lead from the high school, we are looking at our key goals and bringing them to all grades and departments to see how each teacher really is implementing and working on these goals in order to arrive at our vision. So that is the big change that's going on there. In addition, we did get to look over the Illinois Interactive Report Card, which has a superfluous amount of information. If you're ever interested in going on that website, you can find just about every detail you'd want to know on many schools in the area. So that was interesting as well. And that was all I had to report. I'm wondering if Mr. Schuler or Mr. Anderson wanted to add anything at this time?
No.
No, other than, I was amazed as well at the level of detail of information at the school level. It's, it's amazing what you can learn. Somebody moving into a community could learn a lot about how the, the school of teachers at all levels are graded and how they're doing.
That's right. Mr. Schuler is referring to the Illinois Interactive Report Card when he's saying that. Really, I think those of us who were present that day, some of us committee members, some of us community members, were excited about it and very interested to see all of the information that is available. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That brings us to the Board Finance and Operations Committee, Lori Rose, John Julian, and Jeff Pendersky, and I'm not sure who's giving the report.
Jeff's going to start.
Well, why don't I start? And again, it'll be, it'll be Lori and I doing a duet. So the Board Finance and Operations Committee met on November 15th. Present were myself, John Julian, Lori Rose, Mike Borkowski, Stephanie Victor, Julia Wold, Liz Brandell, Lisa Mitchell, Keith LeVanwig, Alan Alvis, Carol White, Brittany Schramm, Katie Lebum, and Cornelius DeBose. Then we had a few guests. Community member Patrick Pat, I think you're here, right? Hey. Jamie Jeffs of Perkins &amp; Will, the architect helping with the cube. Andy Mace and Betsy Allen of Miller Cooper, the district's auditing firm. So the, the meeting was called to order at 8:00 and September meeting minutes were approved. Then we spent some time with the auditors from Miller Cooper. Andy presented a detailed overview of the fiscal year 12 annual financial report prepared by Miller and Cooper and Company. And then the group discussed accounting practices and asked the auditors questions. It was, it was quite a, quite an in-depth discussion. Mr. Mace reported that there were no control deficiencies in, in the auditing procedures. And he will present the findings from this report at our meeting tonight. And I will say that during this discussion, we did ask the staff to leave the room, which is normally our practice, and asked the auditors questions, specific questions about budgets, oversight, controls, particularly controls. And I'll let, I'll let Mr. Mace address, I think those, you know, the, the questions we have during his portion of the...
Excuse me, it's actually, he's actually going to speak during this report, so when you're done, I think we're going to have him come up. Thanks, Jeff.
All righty. All right. Thank you. Then I'll be quiet about that. And then Alan, Alan reported that the Tax Increment Finance District in West Lake Forest is coming off, is, is, is being discontinued as planned, and this will affect the tax levy. So we discussed the tax levy process for next year and the district will post and advertise the proposed rates and schedule a public hearing. So do you want to?
They both have already been posted, so we will be voting on that in our December Board Meeting. They're posted currently.
And then before we tackle operations, do you want to, do you want to bring Andy up?
That would be fabulous.
Okay, so this is, come on up. And so this is Andy Mace, and he's a, he's a partner at Miller Cooper, who's the firm that audits District 67 and District 115. And he's been doing it a few years, he and his firm have been doing this a few years now. So he's familiar with the school system, systems, people, practices, budgets, and quirks. And so I think that this would be a really good time...
surprises in the numbers here. But we report to you is just like what you receive on a monthly basis. The numbers line up with the budget very well. You've adhered to your financial plan that you've set out, and this audit report, I think, demonstrates that. But what I'd really like to talk more about really is our process and what our role is. Our role, the state statutes require all public entities, all local school districts in particular, to have an outside independent audit conducted annually, and the Board of Education hires us to do that. So we conduct our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, and the state of Illinois also requires us to impose further auditing standards in that we need to conduct our audits in accordance with government auditing standards as well. Now, one of the big additions to government auditing standards is dealing with independence. Those standards really require us to be more independent than just regular auditing standards. So, and that's exemplified also because of the district's policy to talk to us directly without administration involved. So we take that very seriously. Now, as a part of our audit, we not only look at the numbers, but we look at key control elements employed by the district. Now, as a part of Enron and other audit failures of a decade ago, auditing standards were improved to the extent that more emphasis was looked at on the systems of internal controls. District 67 and 115 embraced that, those new standards, by documenting their systems of internal controls over the key transaction classes, so payroll, accounts payable, the treasury function, activity funds, all the main elements of financial activities within the district. So when we come and audit the district, then, we look at the controls that you have in place, and then we perform some tests. We want to see that they're designed properly, the controls are designed, that they've been in place, and that they're operating effectively. As a result of those tests and that analysis, then, leads us to our communications to the board. And as we communicated in committee in detail, we had no findings, which is really rather remarkable. So we looked closely at all these areas, including what we consider to be a risk area in board, in administrative travel, and reimbursements, and that sort of thing. And we found no variations from your stated practice nor industry norms. And consequently, we had nothing to report, which is rare. You know, we do a lot of these school district audits, and normally, there's something to report, and we had no such findings here. So I'm happy to say that the district is well-run from a financial standpoint and that you have the safeguards in place, from our opinion, and that you're good custodians of the financial resources that you have. So that's it. It's a job well done. And the administration and board as supervisors of the administration, I think, is doing a good job. And we do a lot of that. We do a lot of this work. I've spent my whole professional career in this, and this is an excellently run district, in my opinion. Any questions with me?
Yeah, I was going to say, does anybody have some questions here?
This is not a question, but just more somebody to think about for future direction. There's a lot of new regulations, GASB, which are very complex and specifically required, which you address in your audit letter. And your letter also says that it's hard for the district to assess the impact of these. As an auditor with many years of experience, could you just give us a two-sentence summary of where you think these new accounting regulations will take our district, if you have an opinion on it?
Yeah, well, the biggest one on the horizon relates to pension reporting, and the thrust of that is that we're, as an accounting profession, the GSB, you refer to the Government Accounting Standards Board as our accounting standard-setting body, that you need to adhere to in your external financial reporting. But what they've done is they've looked at the fact that it's not readily apparent in these financial reports what the unfunded pension liabilities are out there. So as a result, they've modified their standards, and it is coming where we'll be reporting in these financial statements, then, exactly what that burden is. So that's the big one, and that will impact you in the next couple of years.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Lori, can I point out that in addition to the reporting that's changing, the funding is likely to change? And I will point out that Alan and Jennifer are already accounting for that in the five-year budget. Is that fair to say? Some sort of estimate of a conservative expectation of that change, where more of the funding burden comes down to the local level.
Yeah, that's on the horizon. Absolutely, yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Then, Andy, thank you.
You're welcome.
Very, very much, and I appreciate it. And then I think that moves us on then to the operations portion of the report.
Okay.
We will be voting to accept the independent audit later in the meeting, but understanding that you probably have other things to do this evening, don't feel obligated to stay.
We'll now continue with the operations report from the meeting, joint finance operations meeting of November 15th. Alan Albus gave us a report on the Sound Abatement project at Cherokee. Unfortunately, we only received one bid, and in keeping with the fiscal conservative practice, the committee discussed the project and decided that we should have more than one bid, so we will, as a district, rebid the project and come back to you with more information on that once it is rebid. Alan also presented the final change order for the Deer Path Tile Project, which, as reported in the past, was a very large undertaking at Deer Path School, which was timely completed this summer. And you can, if you haven't gone in and seen the result, I urge you to do so. It's very beautiful, and students, teachers, administrators are enjoying that now. The change order will be presented as an action item later this evening, and the committee was joined in our discussion of this item by Carol White and various members of the administration. And we're fortunate that we were able to open school on time despite some hiccups in the project. It did result in some overtime work, and hence, we're bringing the item before you tonight. Alan also introduced the Perkins Will Architecture Firm, which is known to our district for many other projects. And the architect Jamie Jeffs appeared with the committee and showed group concepts and finishes, which were selected by a committee of students and teachers. In conjunction with that, Alan Albus presented a five-year projection indicating how the district finances would be impacted by the Cube project. There is also an action item on the Cube later this evening. And finally, we talked about ERI, which is another acronym, Early Retirement Incentive, and the district's participation in that, along with the city of Lake Forest. The city is currently looking at an early paydown of the ERI liability, and I believe, Alan, that we are mandated to participate in the ERI. Is that correct? As a governmental entity in our affiliation with the city?
Because we're under the umbrella of the city, when they decided to participate in the ERI program, then yes, we were into that. But what we talked about at the committee, and we're not presenting to you tonight, but we will at the December meeting, is the opportunity to pay off the obligation of that early rather than amortize it over a 10-year period. And there are financial advantages to doing so, and that's what we discussed with the committee. But that talks about our relationship with the city. Before the city went ahead to make a decision to do that, which again would obligate us, they wanted our input as to where we were at, so that's why we went to the finance committee on it.
Right. So that is not an action item for tonight, but it's an indication of the way in which our financial people are really looking forward five years and looking for opportunities to minimize costs, for example, paying down an early liability. We did set a future meeting time at 8:00 for, oh, I don't have the date on my sheet here, but future meetings will be at 8:00, and this particular meeting was adjourned at 9:45. This concludes the operations portion of the report. Oh, do my other, John, do you have anything to add?
No, I think you covered it, Lori. I think you're fine.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much. This brings us to our liaison reports. First, we have the North Suburban Special Education District, and Lori, has that been, is that now you, I believe?
I am now the liaison, but there was a scheduled meeting which did not take place, and I believe the next one is in January.
Okay. Thank you very much. Illinois Association of School Boards and EdRed, Bill Anderson.
This month, there is no report.
Thank you very much. The Curriculum Coordinating Committee and Lori Rose. I am now going to hand this over to Andy Henrickson. Thank you, Andy.
We had a great meeting on November 1st. We welcomed two new parent representatives, Suzanne Thomas and Kathy Ivanjack. We covered in some detail some of the Common Core strategies that we are undergoing in our revision of curriculum. We watched a YouTube video. Dan Meyer puts on how math class must change. I encourage everyone to Google the YouTube Dan Meyer video. Eleven minutes really explains the difference in how instruction needs to occur and what we've been working on these last three years. In English Language Arts, another area of the Common Core state standards change, we had a teacher, Liz Abel, Department Chair for Language Arts, come and talk about how argumentative writing has replaced persuasive writing for the grade 612. And so she detailed some of the inservicing our teachers have had and had again today, coincidentally. In science, we're still waiting on the next generation science standards that are due to come out either in January or February. We've been working towards change in that area as well, but that'll be ramped up this summer. And social studies standards are soon to come out as well. Incidentally, Illinois wants us to be totally conform to their Common Core state standards by 2013. I think that's next year. So, interesting. We will certainly be ready to be in compliance with math and language arts next year as we adopt a new math program probably for K-4, and our math committee is working hard to make a recommendation on that, so doing good research. However, in science and social studies, since the state actually isn't coming out with their standards, we will be a little bit behind. The other thing we covered was the PARC. PARC assessment comes to us in the fall of 2014, so they say. It will replace ISAP, and PARC stands for Partnership for Readiness for College and Career. And so we looked at some of the released sample items in math, and they are exciting, excitingly difficult, but sets a new challenge for our district, and if any district can handle these challenges, it is ours. So we are excited about that. That wraps up our CC report. Our next meeting is December 6th. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Thank you very much. The Spirit of 67 Foundation met on Tuesday, November 13th at 9:30 a.m., right here at West Campus. The discussion focused again around the fact that current donations are down a little bit from last year, as well as the family participation rate is down from last year. And there are some very creative thoughts, and some good opinions were expressed, and the spirit is working hard to understand why that is and to move that in the right direction. The next spirit meeting is the Annual Holiday Party, which is scheduled for Tuesday, December 12th, and I believe, board members, that we are all invited, so hopefully, we will see you there. There was another committee meeting, and that was the Policy Committee met on Friday, November 2nd at 8:00 a.m. That consisted of John Julian and myself. Lori Rose was absent that morning. We met jointly with the District 115 Policy Board members. We reviewed the policies that are included in the board packet for approval later in this meeting, and quite frankly, I think we felt that those policies, there really are no substantive changes. So it was kind of a, we need to think about how we handle this process in the future, because it may just go, when we have those types of policies that, you know, we have to accept because they're state law, we might as well just take them directly to the board rather than having a committee meeting first. There is another policy or two that I know is being worked on by Mr. Simic and some of the other administrators that we will be seeing later in the year. That concludes the liaison reports and brings us to action items. The first action item is the approval of the Whipple Consulting contract. Mr. Simic?
Thank you, Mrs. Wold. I recommend the approval of what winds up being a balance of a three-year contract for Whipple Consulting. This contract will take us through projects, including but not limited to reinstating a paper newsletter for the district. One of the things that, for the two districts, actually, one of the things that comes up again and again, particularly with our business community and our, 97% of our residents that do not have a student in the high school, for example, is the fact that we are not communicating with them on an ongoing basis. And for our 67 community, that newsletter looks like closer to 80% of our community that does not have a child in our K-8 schools. Also, the reworking, the entire reworking of our website, the launch of social media, community engagement plan, a comprehensive community engagement plan that will lead to visioning for our district and districts, and then obviously, then, goals as well. To provide us some comps that are really pretty awkward comps, Mrs. Hermes will show us what are really sort of an apples and oranges comparison on some financials.
All right. Thank you for the disclaimer, Mr. Simic. It is very, very difficult to try to benchmark this position, and it's really for a couple of reasons. One, when you look at this position, it's hard to say apples to apples. If we were simply to look at a first-grade teacher in a comparable area to another first-grade teacher, you generally know that they are covering the same material. When you're looking at communications positions, that's not the case. You may have everything from someone who is a copywriter to someone that's just putting stuff up on the web that's just being sent to them. They may not be involved in some of the liaison roles that we currently have here. So it's very wide areas of responsibilities, and districts take a variety of different ways to fill these type of positions. What I attempted to grab from all the districts in kind of the surrounding area that we compare to is whether or not they were employing either a direct employee or whether they were hiring a consultant. So several do employees, though there are some that have consultants. And also tried to, for the best of my ability, to grab the number of years they've been in that position. As many of you know, Ms. Whipple has been with the district a long time. She does have the, not that I'm calling you anything other than lovely, the most years in any of these positions in any of the surrounding districts. I also include it because it's important to know what pension system they're in, and that's part of the reason why it makes it difficult to get this information.
Is there a way to make that slide larger?
I will ask you, Mr. DeBose. What I attempted to grab from all the districts in kind of the surrounding area that we compare to is whether or not they were employing either a direct employee or whether they were hiring a consultant. So several do employees, though there are some that have consultants. And also tried to, for the best of my ability to grab, the number of years they've been in that position. As many of you know, Ms. Whipple has been with the district a long time. She does have the, not that I'm calling you anything other than lovely, the most years in any of these positions in any of the surrounding districts. I also included because it's important to know what pension system they're in. And that's part of the reason why it makes it difficult to get this information.
Is there a way to make that slide larger?
I will ask you, Mr. DeBose. If someone is in a TRS pensionable position, it's much easier to grab that information because TRS is dictating what exactly is considered reportable, and there are several searchable databases to gather that. IMREF, that is not the case. Not, every district does not pay the same pension amount. It is your own actuarial percentage that is paid. So 67's number is not the same as 115, which is not the same as District 65, and there are no searchable databases to gather that information. So, that's kind of a broad overview of how difficult it is to get. But what I was able to get, and mostly by working with the contacts that we have at these other districts, also is whether they're 12 months, whether they're 10 months, some of them are part-time, some of them do other duties, so I tried to separate that out. Some of them have other things included. In the right-hand column, if you read the top, if it was still on there, it does say annualized cost with board-paid pension. So for employees that are listed on here, it includes the estimated pension cost. It does not include health insurance, life insurance, ADD, all the other type of things that you would have applicable to an employee. You can see we did highlight in green, as is custom the District 67 color. It looks a little more green on my paper. And blue for the Lake Forest 115. To see exactly where that consultant contract falls, that is our all-in cost. Obviously, we don't pay any pension, any health insurance, anything on that because she is a consultant and not an employee. So that's kind of the broad overview. Happy to answer any questions on the comps. This is 2011 data, which was the most recent I could grab at the time this was compiled.
Why is 115, why is their numbers lower than ours?
That'd be a great question for Ms. Golan. No, I'm not, I'm not sure.
Typically, it's 50/50, right? Right down the...
These are consultants. So we have consultants, they've not always been 50/50. Depends on the amount of time dedicated to each district. We have different legal fees at each district. We have different auditing fees sometimes at each district depending on the depth and scope of the time needed. So that's not unusual. Employees do vary.
Thank you.
I have two additional data points on this consideration and recommendation. One of those is that if Mrs. Whipple were an employee of this district, she would wind up, if we looked at benefits and retirement and so on, she would wind up having a salary between $50,000 and $60,000. Is that correct?
That's correct. I was asked that question, and I did back into it. On that figure is what that would be the equivalent of an employee. So adding in those things, which our rate of IMREF is currently over 11%, it's heading to 15. What FICA, Medicare, Social Security, if they had a standard health insurance, family plan, what that cost would be, and it would be the equivalent. I think I calculated it to be just under $56,000 would be a salary employee.
And following up on that, Mrs. Whipple is viewed by our parent community, the APT, parents in particular, is what I would call the district mom, for lack of a better phrase. Fielding, just an incredible number of phone calls from... Maybe that's telling me to not talk so much. I don't know. Incredible number of phone calls that we don't see or even hear about. Sometimes small, sometimes significant, that really decrease very significantly the burden on our administrators and also increasing the information flow to our parent community. And all of this is done at odd hours of the day and weekends and nights oftentimes. And done with grace and with poise. And I find her work to be absolutely impeccable and recommend this contract's approval.
I too would like to add that because I think, being the Board President, I probably interact with Mrs. Whipple more than the other Board members and have frequently spoken with her very late in the evening, very early in the morning, at 7:00 a.m., and often on the weekends, and really do trust her interpretation of what does this mean for our community? Because she has been such an important member in our community for so long, giving that viewpoint and then the depth of knowledge of the different constituents here, I think is very valuable. The one other comment I would like to make is that I think you've done a great job of setting forth a three-year plan going forward for the very important roles of community engagement, of changing the website. I think those will be things that really our community will find very valuable and will really help with the transparency of our district and our school board. So I think it's a great plan. Do we have any other questions? May I have a motion to approve the Whipple Consulting contract?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Mrs. Wold?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Nay, and I'd like to make a statement explaining my vote. With all due respect to Mrs. Whipple, who's sitting about 25 feet in front of me, this is not intended personally, but I have several objections to this recommendation. Number one is while Mrs. Whipple is not an attorney, if she were an attorney, she would have a conflict of interest. This is a concern that I raised at our July 27th meeting this year, that she represents the city, the city of Lake Forest, a major client, as well as Districts 115 and 67. As we move forward into an arena, as our auditor pointed out earlier, where we have potential unfunded, unknowable liabilities, and we may look at options of re-characterizing or eliminating schools. The city of Lake Forest owns the property underneath our schools, and I think issues could arise which might result in extended negotiations, possibly hostile between the city and the school district. In order to preserve objectivity and representation in the communications side, I would recommend hiring a consultant or even an employee without such a potential conflict of interest. Secondly is the compensation, which on our contract is $97,000, nearly $98,000. I think when you add the compensation of 67 and 115, you get quite a high number. And while it's two districts, really, a lot of the work is the same. We have similarity of administrators, we have similarity of parents, we have similarity of students, and similarity of community. And if you just add the two numbers together and go back to the chart that we saw earlier, it's way off the chart. And finally, while I agree with a three-year plan, and I think it's a great idea, I feel that the restructuring of the website should be done by an outside consultant with expertise in website design and that sort of thing. While I understand that's in the works, in the scope of this contract, I think it's better to split it into two contracts, one of which would be communications, and the other which would be website design. Of course, coordinating with communications, but I think that should be a paramount expense, the redesign of our new website and the payment of a consultant for that. So for these reasons, I vote no. Thank you.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Mr. Pendersky?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Motion carries, six to one. This brings us to the rejection of the Cherokee School sound abatement bids.
Thank you, Mrs. Wold. And this is an issue that came up at a meeting with our city officials, city manager and his direct reports today. It's an item of interest to them, and it's a good neighbor work that we're doing to abate sound on our Cherokee property. And while we have the rejection of the bid here, that does not mean that we are not seeking a solution to this quite aggressively, actually. They're trying to find a cost-effective solution that provides a reasonable dollar amount while providing, reducing, while reducing the amount of sound that that location is producing. So with that, Mr. Alvis?
I'd like to give a little background on this. As everyone's aware, the last, especially this last summer, it was extremely hot. And we ended up running the air conditioner Cherokee almost nonstop. And that brought some complaints from neighbors. And in doing some testing, we found that at the property line, we are over the decibel limit that we should be. So that necessitated to do some type of work of sound abatement. We engaged our architects to work on the project. We put this in Capital Projects originally as a $50,000 placeholder. As the design and the work progressed, I was notified by our architect that that number wasn't going to be enough because of the amount of structural steel that's involved in the abatement panels. We went out to bid, and at the time, before bidding, he said this could be double the cost that we have in. When we did do the bid, it did come in slightly under double that cost. And Mrs. Rose reported earlier in the Operations Committee, we only received one bid, and that's the reason we were rejecting. I'd like to expand on that just a little bit, too. When we go out to bid, we always try to get multiple bids. And we always feel comfortable when we do that and those bids are tight, meaning the numbers are fairly close, then we know everybody looked at the project the same way, interpreted the project the same way. Occasionally, we will get one bid on a project. And when that happens, we have to take a step back and ask several questions. Is the cost in line with where we thought it would be? And so really, the cost on this isn't that far out of line. Is the rejection and rebidding of the project going to be detrimental to either our operation or completion of some objective we have? And in this case, the answer was no. We're not running the air conditioner now, as Mr. Simic said. We won't run it again until next summer. So we have time to take a step back and to go ahead and rebid this and try, in conjunction with our contacts and our architects' contacts, trying to solicit more submittals on it. There's a danger in doing that. There's a number out on the street. That bidder may not choose to bid again. And if nobody else bids, then we've got another problem that we have to face. But because of the amount of time involved and because it is not detrimental to an objective or a completion date, we made the decision to recommend to you that we reject the bid and go back out. We are always looking for ways to value engineer these projects.
Any questions, Board members? May I have a motion to reject this Cherokee School sound abatement bid?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Is this a roll call? No. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. The approval of construction bids for Deer Path Middle School East Cube. And I believe, Board members, we do have a handout in front of us on this. Mr. Simic?
Thank you, Mrs. Wold. And with considerable excitement, after a great deal of work from our staff and our architects, we're very pleased to have Mr. Alvis present the proposal for bids on our Cube project. Mr. Alvis?
Some of you may know, but due to circumstances really beyond my control, I have not been in the district the last couple of days, and I've had very limited access to communications. So this may be a little more disjointed than it normally would have been, but we're going to give it a try. What I would like to do is ask if Dr. Hendrickson would be able to talk about the genesis of this project and how it evolved. From there, then, we have Jamie Jeffs from Perkins Will here. We're going to attempt to show some conceptual plans on the Board and talk through them and look at finish boards as well. And then we'll talk about the bid process, and then talk about how that fits into the five-year projection. So, we have not coordinated any of this, so we'll give it our best shot here.
It's going to be awesome. All right, first of all, the Cube, which we keep calling the Cube, is actually C to the third power, C to the third power, because it's communication, collaboration, and creativity. And these are some of our 2020 vision skills that we've been working on. So the genesis of the project was the sixth-grade and fifth-grade teachers, having had those netbooks, said, hey, we need a space for our kids to collaborate. We need a small spaces for groups of three or four to create videos to demonstrate their learning. We need a small space for kids to come together and do research where they're not sitting out in the hallway where we can't see them. We want to be able to monitor a big space where all of our kids are able to be working with multimedia. So Dr. Griffith heard that, and he said, gee, I've been looking for an idea for this old administrative center, which we don't use but a couple weeks a year for our time zone project. And so then Patty Fleser and Leanna Fifehaus, our librarians, said, hey, you know, five years ago, we were talking about making that end of the wing the library. So these teachers all got together and came to me, came to Dr. Griffith, and said, why don't we make this a multimedia resource learning 21st century center for kids? And so that's where this idea came from. And quickly, we got the students involved in the idea generation. Well, how would you use such a space? And they told us exactly what we thought we'd hear. Don't change those little offices. Those little offices would be great for these collaboration centers for us. We need a big room to create green screen videos. The whole room needs to be painted green with green carpeting and curved corners. And they started all these great ideas about how they would use this space. And so we, the teachers, got even more excited about it and involved more and more people. So, it culminated for us, just a week ago, where some of the students and staff got together and looked at the color palettes that they're proposing for this remodeling of that time zone, that old administrative area past the security doors in the far eastern edge of DPM. And we couldn't be more excited about this. The staff is very anxious or hoping that you're going to be as excited as we are.
The next segment, I'm going to ask Cornelius if you could try and call up those PDFs, and Mr. Jeffs from Perkins Will will go to the podium. Again, to reiterate for people, the area that we're going to be looking at, to give you a perspective, is on the far, far east end of Deer Path School. There used to be the administration offices for District 67 before moving out here. And there were two boardrooms, the Beecher and the Baggett Room. And so this conceptual design really renovates that entire area. As far as construction and disruption to school, this is about the best place on campus that we could be doing a project like this because it's at the very end of the campus.
So, we'll just start out doing a brief overview of things here. I mean, we had conceptual sketches. We started this process back in March, and the initial idea here was very conventional, I'll say. And Dr. Griffith challenged us to kind of expand our minds and think about what learning was going to be like in the 20th, the 21st century. How is it different than how it was previously?
Before you go off that slide to give everyone an orientation, you can see what looks like a hallway through the upper third of that drawing. And north of that is where the Beecher and the Baggett rooms were. And then south of that hallway is where the old District 67 administrative offices were. And the wall configurations there are very similar to how the walls are configured for the old admin center.
So we, so we had shown a conventional library set up in the north, taking over the Beecher and Baggett areas. And several smaller spaces around a larger common area. And then we started to open it up, take out the corridor walls, open up the middle space, and start to integrate the different areas and create different lounge spaces, and then smaller collaboration areas to the south and areas for computer-based teaching, more conventional classroom computer setups. And the key here was that we wanted to maintain supervision. So, we had staff... So we had, uh, staff area kind of towards the middle, which could supervise the whole, um, space, whether it was the small areas to the south or the more open areas. And then it kind of evolved into these different zones. And then we started to look at, well, what are the shapes of these different spaces? And as part of the group process, we came up with this amoebish shape and that was really, really kind of unique and fun. And that came from the staff wanting this to be a very dynamic and, um, innovative type space. Again, still maintaining the same, uh, supervisory areas. And we referred to this central area as the information desk. And part of that is similar to what they have at the Apple stores, like the Genius Bar, where students and staff can interact with each other and, um, share technology, share techniques on how presentations are being done, have small group presentations. And then, as part of the, after we had about three schematic design meetings, we, uh, we, we noticed that not only the space is important here, but the furniture is going to be very important to this, how the space functions, what types of activities go on in the space and how the kids can use it. So we, we ended up taking a group of, uh, half a dozen kids and, uh, about half a dozen administrators down to the merchandise mart to show them different types of furniture and how it's used in learning environments and how it affects the different types of spaces. And then we started to further develop our plan based on some furniture selections and, um, further input from the staff and students. And after that tour of the mart, the students actually came back to our office and critiqued the plan, gave their input, which was very valuable to us. Um, and, uh, actually were very involved in the process. And I think that's one of the most fun things about this project is that the staff, the students, and the architects were kind of all involved. It was very democratic. Here's, uh, photos of the team and one of our schematic design workshops. So this is fairly close to what the final plan looks like. So at the top, we have the Beecher, what are now the Beecher and Baggett conference rooms. The computer hub is basically where the computer lab sta- stands today. The print media stacks will go just to the east of that, to the right. You see the, the corridor is, has been eroded away by the shapes that we've kind of opened up. Um, yeah. And the info desk and Genius Bar have been integrated into this amoebish shape down here. So we'll have two staff here. And then this kind of round circular cou- couch element where kids and staff can gather around to have small group conversations or presentations about technology. You know, my computer's not working right. How do I do this on this certain software? And then over the back, we'll have stool height counters here so that kids can set up and be able to watch the presentation that's going on here. This is a performance area where we could gather large groups to have a Skype session. There's a drop-down screen in this area. There's tiered seating around the perimeter. Down here, we have kind of basically lounge areas with soft seating. There's more soft seating in the middle and this is kind of right under where the skylight is in that space right now. Back here, we have the green screen studio that Andy talked about with the coved walls. Um, all, three walls of the, of the room are painted green. There's a green floor, uh, with a coved base to help them in filming their movies. Um, and then these offices here are basically small collaboration spaces and essentially unchanged, um, other than finishes.
Before you go on to the finishes, if I could comment on, on the furnishings. Andy talked about, uh, the themes of this and one of them being collaboration. And that's kind of a new trend in, in furniture, uh, about collaborative furniture, which is furniture that's mobile, that you can move around, you can reconfigure for different uses. I think it was a week ago, Monday, um, we had a meeting and Judy was there, Laura was there, Amy was there. Um, we had a parent volunteer there, Jennifer, um, McGregor. And, and we went through the furnishings and it was really, it was really neat to be part of that, to listen to the discussions about how they were going to use it. And after the, the spec of the furniture that's up there, r- really, we talked about buying some things in phases and kind of living in the space for a while because they were talking about different applications of the rooms and how would we move things and how would we do this? Um, so it, it was a really productive meeting and, um, it started with the furniture that the architects designed based on the functionality from the discussions with the staff and the students. We're not presenting the furniture to you tonight for your consideration. That work's still going on. Um, I would ballpark the furniture cost to be in the hundred thousand dollar range. And I'll talk about that a little bit later when we get into the, the overall cost of the project. Uh, Jamie, if you could jump for a second to the finish board.
Sure.
Uh, there. And I want to point out with, Jamie came out last week to the committee, the operations committee, and showed this. And one of the comments made, which I thought was very astute, was that, boy, there sure are some trendy colors there and is this going to look dated in a few years? And one of the things that Jamie responded with is really kind of what are the base colors and then what are the accents? So I'm going to ask you to, to really touch base on that for a moment.
Oh, yeah. So I kind of tried to solve that problem with this board. The biggest, the biggest color is the carpet and that's going to take up most of the, most of the area is, is this color here. So, and then most of the walls are neutral, the white up here. And the ceilings will be like this. So the background is really neutral and the, the hotter accent colors that you're seeing here are um, really just accents and punches of color. So we don't have, you know, this trendy green carpet everywhere that's going to be outdated in three years. Um, so we were really cognizant of, you know, where we're using color and, you know, we were deliberate with it. And, you know, it, it, it makes the space, um, more dynamic, but it's not going to make it look dated. So this is the primary field carpet. There's a slight accent around the perimeter that's a similar carpet. There is a green color that's used at the, um, the mentor node. And then there's an area rug that's created from these four colors underneath the skylight. These are all fabrics that will be used on the furniture. And then these are plastics that will be used on some of the chairs. Um, the casework, most of this casework will be plastic laminate, these two colors, and solid surface. And then these are paint colors. So like I said, most of the walls are the neutral white and gray and then we have accent colors. And the other trick was getting a palette that would work with this, the bright green color that's going to be visible in the green screen room, so. But I think, um, the interior designers did a pretty good job.
Okay, so once the conceptuals were done, um, the architects then started on all the, the plans, the demolition plans, the, the construction plans. And, uh, about a month or two ago, there was a pre-bid meeting, s- uh, mandatory pre-bid meeting. We had 16 vendors show up for that. Ultimately, we had eight submit bids on the project. The, um, the bids ran from, and I'm looking because there are alternates, so I want to make sure I capture the numbers right. From about six hundred and sixty-four thousand up to somewhere over eight hundred thousand. Um, what I said earlier on the Cherokee bid, we felt very good about that for the scope of the project, that we had a lot of tight bids in there. Um, and so then, once we do that, then you identify the lowest bidder and you do what's called the due diligence. So the architects do a background check. They have a scope meeting. They have discussions with them to make sure they're on the same page as, as far as what we're trying to accomplish. Then they really kind of run a background check on them. And based on that, they're, um, the low bidder passed muster on that and Construction Solutions of Illinois is the recommended contractor for this project. Now, how does that fit in to the five-year plan? Because that's one of the things that we talked about with the committee last week. Is this, is this the high and best use of the space? And then does this have a detrimental impact on our finances? And really, to answer that question, we had to update the entire five-year projection. And so, um, as Mr. Pendursky talked about earlier, we touched on a lot of things in the most recent update, which included our, our recently, uh, concluded labor agreements with both unions. We factored in projected student enrollment in coming years. We looked at staff retirements. We looked at staffing changes due to projected enrollments. Uh, a possible pension cost shift from the state. We, we did build that in last spring. The, um, general consensus was that the state would start transferring a little more than half a percent a year of pension costs to us. So we've built that in already. Even though they haven't acted on that, we're assuming that. We updated our capital projects, including a significant initiative over the next several years to abate asbestos and replace carpets throughout the district. Um, if you think back to Project 2000, or if you weren't here at the time, in 2000, the district spent a lot of money renovating all the schools and put in a lot of carpet, brand-new carpet, uh, in all of the buildings. Well, now that carpet's getting to be 12, 13 years old. Lot of that carpet was put on top of asbestos tile. So as that carpet wears out and we need to replace it, we're going to have to do an abatement to do it properly. Rather than hit a wall and have that all kind of wear out and, and look bad at once, we're trying to be forward-thinking and look at, we need to start staging that or looking at ways of doing that over the next several years. So that's been factored in. Uh, we've touched on a little bit, this, this ERI payment to the city, which will be significant, uh, about five hundred thousand dollars in and of itself. But that will avoid a lot of interest costs over the next 10 years to the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. Then we built in the construction costs associated with the cube as well as the furniture. And while we will come back to you, assuming you approve this and, and we talk about the other projects, we'll need to amend this year's budget and it will dip into our fund balance. But we said from the beginning, this project would be something we'd be looking to pay for out of fund balance. Uh, we still, we still are in a very healthy position going forward to meet our daily operating costs, even with the assumptions I've talked about. So, uh, we're recommending to you tonight that, uh, the contractor, Construction Solutions of Illinois, be awarded the bid to do the cube construction with the alternates in the amount of six hundred and sixty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars as presented.
Any, any questions, board members?
I, I have a question. Ellen, um, I've not seen before this bid tabulation summary and I'm trying to understand the cost of the bid. It looks, if you look at the, the base bid sum, it looks like ATP Enterprises the lowest bidder. And could you explain to us the alternates and, and why, um, the recommendation is to Construction Solutions on a cost basis?
Well, a lot of times when you're doing a, a construction bid, y- you may break down the project into several components. So a base bid and then you may add alternates in so that you have some latitude in picking and choosing if you want to do those pieces or not do those pieces. So the alternates included in this bid, uh, I think alternate A1 is a actual deduct to not replace a ceiling in the Beecher and Baggett rooms. And we're recommending we take that deduction. Alternate two is adding finishes to the existing offices and we discussed that. So that would be those yellow areas down on the bottom. But when we, the carpet that's in there now, I think, is a dark green.
Right.
So when we match it up with the finish board to what's going in, it's going to look old. It's going to look like we didn't finish that off. And so we're recommending that we go ahead with that alternate. The third one is adding new lighting in the existing offices. And Jamie, I can't remember, are those LEDs?
Uh, no, they'll just be direct indirect fixtures, which are ideal for computer use. So we, if, there's going to be a lot of computer use in those spaces.
That's about a six, seven thousand dollar upgrade, but we thought it was worth it. Oh, I'm sorry. The next one says add new LED lighting. And if you could talk about, uh,
Sure, that's, that's the can lighting that will be over the lounge and soft seating areas. Um, just, uh, just your typical round can lights. There'll be LEDs, so, um, long life to span on those, uh, lower maintenance.
And then the last alternate, it says, uh, replace RTU. I assume that stands for rooftop unit?
That's correct.
Good. Um, as the, the plans were being finalized and we looked at the amount of AV equipment that would be going in the space and the number of occupants and they ran their calc's, uh, we were not going to be sufficient in the CFMs.
Correct.
Um, so the mechanical unit on the roof, the HVAC unit, needed to be beefed up. And that could have been done one of two ways, either adding another unit or, um, uh, increasing the size of the existing one. So we had numerous discussions about that. We recommended that we increase the size. There was a little variance in that among the contractors as to whether that was part of the base bid or not. Um, but it all kind of washes out when you add everything up.
Yeah, and this is something that I discussed, uh, at length with Construction Solutions and they definitely had the bid correct. Other contractors, I think, left two rooftop units in. They thought they were putting two new units in and that's why we're getting variances up towards a hundred and twenty thousand dollars versus Construction Solutions, who had an add of, I think it was thirty-seven thousand dollars.
So that's all of them. So again, a lot of times when you bid out, you'll break it down into components so you can kind of pick and choose, uh, without rejecting all the bids. But we're recommending we move forward with all of them, including the deduct.
So on a sort of apples-for-apples basis, um, assuming that we had all of the options, where does ATP come out relative to Construction Solutions?
They're number two.
Right, they're number two at six hundred and seventy-four, uh, I'm sorry, read the wrong line, six hundred and ninety thousand, four hundred dollars.
Thank you. Okay.
Ellen, I know there's some concern about us going over numbers that we talked about originally. But, a- and rightfully so. We have to keep an eye on the budget. But I would like to say, on behalf of the board, I, I think this is the most exciting physical improvement to the properties in years. And it's, it's really difficult to overstate the impact I think this will have on the kids' education. I mean, if you look at modern office buildings, how they're laid out differently than what they used to be. If you look at universities, business schools, law schools, they lay out completely differently. Everything from furniture to design to lines. Uh, and it is, it's interesting. It's all in an effort to get collaboration and more ideas flowing. The, the other thing I like about this is it's got the backing of the administrators, the board, the teachers, most importantly, the students. The students have a lot of input into everything. You know, what, what types of functions are in the space? How is it designed? The furniture. I, I think it's going to be a huge improvement to the way the kids get to study, do presentations, practice presentations. I think it's going to have a really big impact. And we do all, we, we budget all these items, roof repairs, you know, we've been- And we do all, we budget all these items, roof repairs, you know, we've been replacing tiles in the middle school, getting rid of asbestos. We have to do these things, but big picture, this is very forward-looking. I think it's very creative and I think it's going to have a huge impact. So I think all of the board would back me on this. It's very exciting.
Thank you, Rick, for bringing that up. I too am very excited and see, of course, that it's higher than we initially thought or hoped it would be, but see this as such an important move for our district and for our students. Obviously, we look at this, it's an incredible teaching and learning opportunity on both sides. Not only with that, but for me, from the inception of this, I thought, wow, this is so in line with our emotional wellness initiative. In this day and age where technology, especially one-on-one technology, is becoming rampant everywhere, and we know that's the way that things are and that things are going, what an incredible opportunity for our kids to be collaborative while they are forward-moving through their technology. So I think this space, I think the plan is amazing as it is, but I think we're going to see in years to come, like Rick suggested, just things that we aren't even imagining yet, real positive things.
Less than what Ellen did earlier, about seven-five dollars a foot. Less, because I was thinking it would be about seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand, adding in furniture. So call it seventy-five dollars a foot with furniture. Honestly, I never believed your original numbers at three hundred to four hundred thousand anyway, so I'm not surprised personally.
Okay, now I have to talk about that for a second. First of all, I think you're right on that the space either enhances instruction or it inhibits instruction. And the way the space has been the last several years is an empty admin office. It wasn't enhancing instruction, so it was ripe for some change. But really, I think what'll help me is some of the first drawings that Jamie was showing. I don't know if you noticed the date over on the left-hand side, but they were talking in March and in April. And it was very similar to the configuration of walls and things that are out there now. So, and I've always said, I always qualify that three to four hundred thousand as a back-of-the-napkin type cost estimate. And I simply called a contractor I know and talked it through about the size of the space. I was a little low on the amount of square footage that we're doing. But what changed, well, it's hard to price until you know what you want to build. And that evolved late this summer and into the fall. But adding the rooftop unit added significantly to the cost and that wasn't envisioned in the spring. And the number of the square footage is a little bit larger. So on purpose, I did not plug this into the five-year until we had a handle on where we thought the costs were. But as it developed and people said, where do you think it's going to be? Well, that's how the number was calculated. So it's not really, I always hate putting out numbers.
And I think we're getting good value. You're absolutely right. It evolved, we're getting good value, and I think this is much better than where it started.
Thank you.
All right. On that note, may I have a...
I just have one...
Sorry, Lori.
I think this is an exciting project educationally, but I spent several years as an attorney for a construction company in New York and I am concerned regardless of our financial position about containing costs. So I was wondering if it's possible at this juncture to approve it with an upward limit on where we'll go rather than coming back and back with change orders. We approved the Deerpath Tile Change Orders. It was an emergency situation, there were unforeseen difficulties. And every construction project typically, there's a couple of unforeseen things and that's why you have a contingency. It seems to me that the contingency here is a little bit low, actually. And I'm wondering if you have any thoughts on where we could, you know, just cap our costs as a district so we don't have to keep coming back and going out of pocket?
The numbers that are in there are essentially, if you take the two numbers, it's a little more than five percent. And, you know, after we've had bids and we have full drawings, we're usually comfortable having five percent contingency, you know.
So is that, is that hard cost or soft cost? This total project budget?
That's just in the project budget as an X hold, so.
That, yeah, well... What we're asking you to approve tonight are the construction bids that came in at the numbers that were stated. When we amend the budget, which we had talked about last summer when we put it on display that if we move forward with the cube, we would come back and amend the budget, we'll address the contingency and the unforeseen number that Jamie has in there. So we'll build that in. In addition, then, we'll address the furniture. So when you add the construction cost, the two numbers here, the thirty thousand for contingency plus the five thousand, and then the estimate on the furniture of a hundred thousand, the amended budget will reflect about an eight hundred thousand dollar cap.
Any further questions? May I have a motion to approve the construction bids for the Deerpath Cube? And that would be approving, now I have to find the name.
You want the motion?
Yes, please.
I move that the Board of Education approve Construction Solutions of Illinois base bid and alternatives one through five for a total amount of six hundred and sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars as presented.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Pandersky?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Mrs. Wold?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler? Motion carries.
Thank you. It is a very exciting project. It will be very fun to see the area, the space change and it's exciting that it will be used by our students this, in 2013. Next, we have the approval of the final Deerpath Middle School Tile Change Order. Mr. Simick?
Thank you, Mrs. Wold, and we're happy to bring this exciting project to a close. So with that, Mr. Alvis.
We'll bring this phase of the project to a close. We still have some negotiation or litigation to go through. Your cover memo, the whole first page is really just a reminder of things that I've written before. On the second page of the cover memo, I touch on the change orders that we're addressing tonight. The first one is for five thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars for additional sealant that ICT applied to encapsulate the floor. I talked to Howard Kinnear, who was our consultant on this, and asked if that was a legitimate charge. And he said yes, because those are always estimates and you have to see how it's covering and he felt that was within reason. Then there are several labor charges. Some are from Vortex and some are from ICT. And as you can see what I've written, there were two of them that we challenged and had go away. One was for ten thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars and thirteen cents and the other one was for thirty-six hundred dollars. Again, this will bring us to, there will be no, there's no outstanding bills other than what's before you tonight. The next phase then will be either to negotiate with the company that did the abatement work, a settlement, or to pursue litigation to recover some of our costs.
Any questions, board members? May I have a motion to approve the final Deerpath Middle School Tile Change Order? Second?
Second.
Roll call, vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Mr. Pandersky?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Wold?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Now, we have, following that report by the independent auditor, may I have a motion to accept the 2012 audit?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call? A voice vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. This brings us to the approval of the IASB Board Policies. This is actually the first reading. What we can do is waive the first reading and approve the policies tonight. Is there, is everyone, is that a...
I think that's what we should do.
May I have a motion to waive first reading?
I move we waive first reading on the proposed policies.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Then may I have a motion to approve the Board Policies as presented?
I also move that we approve the Board Policies as presented.
May I have a second?
A sec.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. And then we have the approval of human resource items, including hiring, resignations, terminations, medical and family leave, absences, and changes in status. May I have a motion to approve the human resources items?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
May I have a roll call, vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Pandersky?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher? Mr. Anderson?
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Mrs. Wold?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler? Motion carries.
Motion carries. This brings us to the consent agenda, in which we have the approval of disbursements, payrolls, and the financial statements, the approval of minutes from an executive session on October 23, 2012, a regular meeting on October 23, 2012, and the minutes of a joint board workshop on October 24, 2012. It also includes the disposal of audio recordings from April 25, 2011. Is there any item that a board member would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move.
Second? May I have a roll call, vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Anderson? Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Mr. Pandersky?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Wold?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. This brings us to our FOIA requests. We had some FOIA, we had a FOIA request from Lisa Black of the Chicago Tribune in Schaumburg, Illinois. Our announcements on Tuesday, December 11, 2012, we will have our next Board of Education meeting at 7:00 PM here at the Lake Forest High School West Campus Boardroom. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I'm sorry, I stand corrected. We do need to go back into closed session for a few minutes. There will be no action taken either in closed session or after we come out of closed session. So may I have a motion to adjourn to executive session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.